Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners call meeting. Today we're going to start off with the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget presentation by City Manager Jesse O'Connor.
Thank you. Good morning. I hope that you all have had an opportunity to review the budget summary that was sent last week. It also is advertised in the paper, the Griffin Daily News, and has been on display in the city manager's office since last Friday as well, the entire budget report as well as the summary. The presentation this morning is new, so this is the first time that y'all will be seeing it. First, I have to just tell Angela Thompson, thank you. She has really pretty much done this single-handedly and it is a great work. It is probably the most difficult budget. I think we say that every year, but I don't know that we thought at one point that we were going to get through it, but we have, and that is because of Angela. So, thank you. All right. The first thing we always start with to remind ourselves, uh-oh, if I turn on the clicker, there we go. There we go. Our goals and our areas of importance. For the most part, our goals have really not changed. This year, of course, they've become a little bit more related to the storm, and so I went ahead and added that in, the storm rebuild and reimbursement. Although we are more than or almost five months past the storm, it is still at the forefront of what we're having to do on a day-to-day basis, particularly as it involves financials. So going through this budget, that was discussed in every budget meeting that we had. Of course, other things that we always talk about, and you can see our areas of importance in this budget is our substandard housing, blight, trash, litter and junk, downtown redevelopment and crime reduction. There we go. All right. So this year for our revenues, our overall expenditures exceed revenues by eight million one hundred and three thousand eight hundred and eighty-five. Last year, our revenues did exceed expenditures by one million three hundred and fifty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-eight as projected. Our general fund expenditures exceed revenues by eleven million two hundred and twenty-five thousand nine fourteen, where last year it was projected that general fund expenditures would exceed revenues by nine million seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-four. Our general fund revenue is up though without transfers by eighty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-three. Last year's projected revenue was three million two hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-three. Our property tax budgeted for this next fiscal year is four million five hundred and sixty-three thousand eighty-five dollars, and that's exactly where we are year-to-date at the end of March. In FY twenty-two, our total collections were four million one hundred and forty-four thousand nine dollars. And FY twenty-one, the total collections were four million three hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and fifteen. So we have continued to see an increase in our property tax collections, although we have not had to increase the mileage rate. And the other important keynotes for general fund revenue was that through seventy-five percent of this fiscal year, we're eighty-four percent of revenue. This next budget, we are budgeting a six hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-dollar increase in real and personal property tax, but our motor vehicle tax and TAVT tax is projected to decrease at fifty-four thousand nine-ten. And that projection this past year was at seven hundred and fifty thousand, but year-to-date, seventy-five percent of the year, we've only collected sixty-nine percent. So we did drop that back a little bit. Our loss projection though is still increased by seventy-five thousand, so it is up to five-point-three million. This past year, we were projected at five-point-two-two-five million, but at seventy-five percent of the year, we have collected almost eighty percent of our loss projections, which is four million one hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-eight. That will be helpful. All right. Our enterprise funds revenue, our solid waste projected revenues have increased one hundred and five thousand eight hundred and fifty-two. Electric has increased five million four hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and four dollars. Waste water, however, has decreased the projected revenue at five hundred and sixty-nine thousand seventeen, while water has increased seven hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty. Our stormwater revenue is projected to increase one hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-seven. Telecom has a slight increase as well at sixty-five thousand seven forty-one, and our golf course is also expected to increase their revenues by sixty-four thousand two hundred. Our total budget for all funds, the projected revenues are up by nine million two hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-nine, but our projected expenses are up as well at sixteen million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven. That is from the projected expenses when began FY twenty-three. However, we do have some big funds that if you take those out, our projected expenses are only up eight million nine fifty-two-six thirty-nine, which makes our projected revenues actually exceed expenditures by three hundred and two thousand eight thirty. So T-SLOSS, CDBG, ARPA, and an airport grant that we'll talk about later have really sort of increased the expenses that we will have this year. Additionally, in our expense highlights, we always like to look at capital. That's a big deal for us. Last year, we budgeted fourteen million one hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine for capital. This year, we are asking for a little more at fourteen million five hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine. The big ticket items for that, as usual, is CDBG, which is one million six hundred and sixteen thousand six eighteen. If you'll remember, a couple of years ago, it used to be a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. They have actually increased it to a million dollars. So our match is that six sixteen six eighteen. We also have our T-SLOSS that will be extending this year for transportation projects at three million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. An addition that we don't normally do this way is a Shoal Creek sewer basin improvement. A lot of times, if we have any kind of million-dollar or more improvement, we go and ask for a Jifa note. However, at this time, we do have reserves for water and wastewater, and they have the budget this year for revenue to be able to do that within budget. So we'd like to do that rather than having to go get another note. You'll see when we get into the wastewater debt service, we're about seven million dollars in wastewater debt, water and wastewater debts. We prefer to do it this way if we can, so we're trying at a small amount. And then we'll start with our Shoal Creek Sewer Basin to look at some I and I there for improvements. Also, as usual, we have four hundred thousand dollars budgeted for electric line maintenance and improvements, three hundred thousand dollars budgeted for new customer construction, one hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred budgeted for a new digger, Derek, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to continue our streetlight LED conversion. And then another big ticket item that is unusual for us is a two-point-two million dollar airport pavement rehab and remarking. This is a federal grant, so we have a very small match, but that is the, for the current airport, six-eight-two. Our general fund capital this year totals one million eight hundred and ninety-three thousand one sixty-nine. So again, the general fund is not requesting a lot of equipment. Last year, the request was one million three hundred and eighty-nine thousand twenty-five, so capital is up by about three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Our expense highlights for personnel, we were able to keep in that two-person increase for each department across the board. This gives raises based on evaluations again for that pay-for-performance, so not everybody will receive two percent, but everybody is budgeted that way. So if somebody gets an additional amount or a lesser amount, then we think that budgetarily, we've estimated about as best we can. Additionally, there is no insurance increase for employees this year. And the thing that I'm most excited about is we actually were able to offer a second plan where you may have an employee who doesn't want to expend that huge monthly cost. They might be younger or very healthy, and so they don't mind that higher deductible because they don't intend to use it. So they're actually going to be able to take home a little bit more money and can use that lower monthly cost for a higher deductible. However, our property and casualty coverage did increase by eighteen percent at one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-six. Additionally, the highlights in our general fund are really very few. Management services, we don't have any changes being requested, nor does finance. IT, well, they're going to have a new position, which is actually not an additional position, but a new one that will be moving from GIS and be named Geospatial Systems Administrator. This is going to give us a little bit more connectivity between our IT and GIS department because GIS is really transforming into more of a technological department. And through our new inventory and work order system that we purchased, this will be a huge key in making sure that that operates successfully. So that is Bradley Durden, who will be moving into an IT role. Fire is, won't have any changes. The police department, we are eliminating the two interim positions in the Office of the Chief. We have not been able to fill those in several years because of the requirements of age and other things. And so rather than continuing to budget for that, we did eliminate those two positions. Public Works is where we have a little bit of change. We are moving the two specialized equipment operators that were the street sweepers. There's always been debate for as long as I have been around as to whether that is a stormwater function or a public works function. And we have finally decided amongst everyone that that is a stormwater function. They are there to make sure that the storm drains remain clean and free of debris. So that is why they are getting it out of the streets. However, the arborist is better suited for public works because a lot of that is done on public property and in our right-of-way. So we did sort of swap those around. So the arborist will move from stormwater to public works, and the street sweepers, the two specialized equipment operators, will move from public works to stormwater. Additionally, Public Works is requesting the addition of a sign shop position, a sign and pavement marking tech. This is another good thing. We have learned that our sign shop really can do a lot more than just replace stop signs. And so internally, we have been able to use them for things like the vayner that we just placed out on the building. And so they need more help. There's only two of them in that division. This will also help with some overtime because right now they're on call. If there's an accident that a stop sign has to be replaced at two o'clock in the morning, they're the ones getting up to do it. So adding that third position can help with some overtime as well. Also, in general, fund planning and development has a few changes. We are adding a position of administrative assistant. I will tell you that Mr. Jacobs and I had a lot of discussion about this because I was concerned that the workload was strictly related to the storm and that by the end of hopefully this year, we wouldn't have that issue. But what I realized very quickly is that we don't have a lot of cross-training within that department because they don't have the ability and time to do it. Ms. Bennett is a sole force in tax and licensing and camera ready, and nobody else does that as far as building permits and sort of coordinating all of that. That should be the work of just Ms. Hunt, but she's having to have help with that. We have a code enforcement admin. But there's just a lot that goes on in that department that the numbers have increased drastically from everything, not just permits. And so we do believe that that administrative assistant position is needed this year and going forward. Additionally, we are requesting to reclass one of the code enforcement officers to code enforcement supervisor. We have been able to fill two of the other positions, and so we do have a code enforcement officer that has been with us for a while that really has taken the lead in our software system, in our filing, in our case management. And so we want her to train the other ones and have a little bit of supervisory responsibility there. And so we have reclassed that position to a supervisor. In economic development, we are reclassing the economic development coordinator to a Main Street manager since we were able to get our accreditation back. We want to make sure that we still focus on that. She will continue to report to Mr. Stratton in economic development, but she will actually be titled Main Street manager. That will be her responsibility from here forward, and we will move her funding and a lot of her positional requests to the Main Street Fund, which has taken place in this budget. And then we have a whole new department, GIS. We are proposing that this become a new department for the same reasons we have realized with our sign shop. They do a lot more than just put dots on a map, and we have used them throughout the city, not just in water or stormwater or electric. And so they really have become their own beast, I will say. Our current GIS administrator is located in the stormwater department, so he will move into the director role in the new GIS department. The CAD slash GIS technician that's in the water wastewater department and the CAD GIS technician electric will also move to this department. And those two will have no changes in their title or grade or compensation. Our enterprise funds, it almost is a little hard to believe, but there are no changes requested for any of them with the exception of just some regular certification increases, some steps that we have already put into place for some of the positions, and then the changes that I reflected in the general fund notes for stormwater. Fuel, as you know, is always a key expense for us. Last year, we did budget pretty high, and I'm glad that we did. You can see for this year, we have knocked that down a little bit, so we are budgeting four dollars and ten cents a gallon for regular gasoline. The high that we have paid so far this year is three ninety-five, so that is getting close to what we were budgeting next year. Below was two forty-six. Diesel, we've actually budgeted two cents lower than what we had paid this year at four ninety per gallon. So far, we've paid as high as four ninety-two and as low as four oh-three. You would think as much gas and diesel as we use across the board, that it would have a huge significance if we did bump those down. But for every five cents that we change it, there's only about a twenty-four thousand dollar change to the budget. So we're comfortable that these numbers, even with the volatility right now, will help us through budget next year. Do you may have any questions before I get into general funds specifically? Okay. And as y'all know, I like to add pictures throughout the year of our employees, so you can sort of see what's been going on. Some of these are very recent pictures. But in our management services department, our budget here has increased ninety-six thousand three hundred and fifty. Your budget as commissioners increased seven thousand two hundred and seventy-four. The city manager's budget increased fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-two. A lot of that is through open record software that we will be purchasing. We believe that that will help us with that organization and prevent us from having to have, we even talked about at one point, a part-time employee because we are answering a lot of those every year, and I think triple the amount that Savannah answers, we've figured out. So for a small city, we are bombarded with open records requests. We are also asking for new chairs for the third-floor conference room. If you've been up there, those chairs are falling apart, and every time you walk in, it looks like there has been some kind of brown snow when somebody sits in them, so we would like to get some new chairs up there. Our communications and PR budget did increase fifteen thousand nine fifty-five. You'll see throughout this presentation, there is a lot of emphasis on communication and how people get around, particularly in this building, but we will be doing that in all of our facilities. You can see just out front when you walk in, we're rehabbing that whole vestibule when you first come in. So now we have an electronic screen out there rather than the little towels that you have to change every time somebody moves. And we're also painting it and getting some other trash cans and things down there that make it a little bit more friendly entrance, so you know where you're going when you get here. Our election budget, oh, I'm sorry, our staff attorney increased ten thousand three hundred and forty-three. Our city attorney decreased by three hundred and fifty dollars, so almost nothing there. But our elections budget is the biggest one that has increased this year. It always increases the year of an election, so we do have that election at the end of this year. However, they increased almost everything that they are doing by a lot. Ms. Slaughter and Ms. Bartholomew have talked several times about what that looks like. We actually have an itemized list such as ballot printing at thirty-three fifty, poll worker salaries at thirteen ninety-five, early voting costs eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, the elections office clerk is sixteen fifteen, the setup for election day is six thousand six hundred and sixty-five, absentee ballots are one thousand thirty, and then all the other voting materials are four thousand three hundred and five. A lot of this, she says, is from the change in the election law, and of course, this is our election this year and not the county, so we bear the brunt of those changes unfortunately. So that is what that is, and the municipal court has also increased twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine. Your particular expenses for the commission, nothing has really changed there. Muni code is still at ten thousand. Your education and training conference and registration there is about sixteen thousand one fifty. What we paid a Three Rivers Regional Commission is twenty-four thousand, the Georgia Municipal Association eighty-five hundred. Our fireworks have gone up drastically the last couple of years at fifteen thousand eight forty-eight. We used to budget ten. The last couple of years, we budgeted twelve, and now this year it was over fifteen, so we did increase that for next year. UGA Griffin is always at seventeen thousand five hundred. Archway is at twenty thousand, and then we do have your contingency budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for any unforeseen situation that may occur. In finance, their expense decreased fifty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine. The director decreased sixty-eight thousand seven forty-one, but accounting increased eighty-three twenty, and procurement increased nine thousand one hundred and ninety-two. Human resources and risk management, our human resources department, projected budget expense did decrease by seventeen thousand nine hundred and forty-nine, but risk management's budget did increase by fourteen thousand thirty-one. In information technology, this is one that I feel like we go back and forth almost every year. I'm hoping we finally figure out what we want to do. But our expense has decreased six hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and forty-one. Most of that is because the software services that were in purchase and contracted services are now within a separate sort of report for software maintenance and then allocated back to respective departments. GIS, the total budget is three hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-five, so the salary and benefits for those three employees is a little over two hundred and ninety-two thousand. Their purchased and contracted services are at forty-two thousand two eighty. Supplies are budgeted at seventeen thousand five eighty, and the inter-fund interdepartmental charges are budgeted at seven, thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight. Again, this is a new department. We think we scrubbed everything from where they used to reside into this new department, but there may be a few changes that will be forthcoming this year through budget amendments, since we haven't had a year of just a GIS department. Public safety, their expense this year did increase two million three hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-three. The police department expense is projected to increase at one million ten thousand one hundred and fifty-four. We are budgeting for twelve police vehicles, seven patrol cars and five CID vehicles. That does include the outfitting of patrol cars. We are able to budget that in cash. That's six hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Inmate custody is back to our pre-COVID numbers. We had budgeted very little for that the last couple of years, but it is back up to about where we used to see it, so it's budgeted a hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred. And they do have just a very slight increase in operating supplies and tools of ten thousand one hundred and forty. The fire department expense increased one million three hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine because this year they need a new pumper truck. This is actually something that has been on order, I think, for forty-something months now, close to. But we do expect it this budget year, so we actually got to put some money in there to pay for it. That is six hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and forty-four. Our crew cab pickup is budgeted at sixty-nine thousand, turnout gear fifty-one thousand six hundred. The other uniforms, both what Chief Hamilton has on now, and their blue uniforms are budgeted at forty-nine thousand three hundred, and they have tools and small equipment budgeted at thirty thousand five hundred and twenty. Public works, our total expenses increased seventy-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-six. However, our director's budget has projected to decrease by ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. The cemetery is expected to decrease by twenty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-one. Our facilities budget is expected to decrease by thirty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-three. This is again where you see one of our goals and communication for this building. We'll be adding two informational kiosks to our bigger entrances to explain to people where they need to go. So that's budgeted for two of them at fifteen thousand dollars. And then streets has decreased by one hundred and eighty-four thousand eighty dollars. Their capital is budgeted for four hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. In FY twenty-three, we had a budget of eight hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars for capital. This year, the pellet works department needs a cat skid steer at a hundred and thirty thousand, hydro cedar at a hundred and five thousand dollars. Both of those are used when we go do our nuisance abatement program. Our tractor with a rotary cutter for sixty thousand. They are in need of another four-by-four pickup for fifty-five. And then we are also looking at installing some flashing beacons at crosswalks throughout the city at fifty-one thousand eight seventy-four to help with pedestrian safety. I don't know that we have our locations picked yet, but that is something that we are looking at as we go out and look at our sidewalk plan, and as we also look at repairs, two sidewalks to see where we may need some extra safety precautions. Also in public works, our parks budget has increased by forty-six thousand two ninety-seven. They are requesting three different capital items, a tire changer at eight thousand dollars, a mower at fourteen thousand dollars, and I had no idea that they froze in the winter because they don't have any heaters in their shop building. So we are asking to put some heaters down there at fourteen thousand dollars. The sign shop budget is where we see the biggest increase because of that new position, so that total is two hundred and sixty thousand thirty dollars. The salary and benefits, though, is less than eighty thousand dollars for that position, and then supplies also increased fifty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-one. The welcome center operational costs expected for FY twenty-four is one hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven. We do have an allocation to the archives of sixty thousand eight hundred and thirty-five, which has increased from FY twenty-three's projection of forty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-nine. The city will split the operational costs at forty thousand four seventeen fifty. Archives' total budget is one hundred and seventy-three thousand nine eighty-four, and the city and county will split that at eighty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-two. Development services, their expenses have increased this year, projected at a hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-eight. This is the second year that we are budgeting for the comprehensive plan. We were able to spread that out between two different fiscal years. So last year, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars. This year, we've had to budget eighty-five thousand dollars to finish that contract with GMC. Our Charles Abbott and Associates building inspections expenses are expected to decrease at three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and FY twenty-three, we budgeted three hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty. We do have fees associated with the CDBG and CHIP grants, which are eighteen thousand dollars. And then, of course, the new position of administrative assistant and reclassing the code enforcement officer to a code enforcement supervisor has an expense. They are not requesting any capital this year. Transportation, the budget for that is the same as last year at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If you'll remember, last year, we were reclassified to a more rural designation, so what we have to put into those federal grants has increased, but we are keeping it the same for this year. Tax and licensing increased forty-eight thousand five hundred and eighteen. That's where we budget for a lot of our GMA services and for the absorption of bank fees. So if somebody comes in and wants to pay something with a credit card, they're able to do so. I'm not too far ahead, Steve. It ain't working. Okay. Economic redevelopment, this is where we have our land bank budget is the same as FY twenty-three at one twenty-three-seven. For those that do not know, the county did approve five-zero last night for the personnel lease to be between the city and the land bank authority. And so the IGA has now been approved to be changed, so that employee will now be reporting here, which means when we adopt this budget and these organizational charts, I'll be bringing one back to you, hopefully in August to add that change to it. But that's good news, so I'm glad we can move forward with the land making, get that hopefully headed in the direction that we all need it to go. I think maybe my battery's died. It's not working at all. Oh, did you do it or did I do it? Oh. Triple A's. Okay. One last thing on development services. The revenue associated with inspections is budgeted this year at four hundred and four thousand dollars. Last year, it was at four sixty-five-five. So that even though the expenses dropped, the revenue expected from those inspections has also dropped. All right. Can you get us to economic development? They've got it. I don't, Susan took it. You might have any questions anymore while we wait? Okay. All right. In economic development, we have expenses projecting to decrease at seventy-one thousand one hundred and ninety-nine. Our historic city hall facility's budget is sixty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-nine compared to last year's fiscal year twenty-three, fifty-one thousand seven seventy-five. Our economic development coordinator, thank you, has been reclassed to the Main Street Manager and the Main Street Fund. Again, we are conservatively budgeting for revenue for our rentals there at twenty thousand dollars. We're still trying to work through that. It has become, when you have big events there like weddings, it is a much more difficult rental than just renting it to somebody for a couple of hours. So we're trying to decide what that really needs to look like for us as a city trying to rent a government building and whether or not that's something we need to contract another person to do, or we need to handle in-house and just figure out a better way to do that. So we're still working through those challenges, so we're not projecting a huge increase in revenues. It's still not working.
You have the next line?
All right. Our highlights in our enterprise funds. See, our electric department revenues have expected to increase six million three oh-two-two thirty-four. Residential service is expected to increase three million one hundred and twenty-three thousand five sixty-six, while commercial service is expected to increase two million six hundred and forty-eight thousand six twenty-one. Our industrial service is also expected to increase at nine hundred and eighty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-two, but our power cost adjustment and our environmental compliance cost recovery is expected to decrease by twelve thousand eight seventy-five. We're budgeting the same this year as we did last year for off-system sales at three hundred thousand, and we are not projecting to have as much revenue in delinquent penalties, so that is decreasing at seventy thousand four hundred and sixty. We do have one third-party sales contract remaining. We did have three, Evergreen, Hartford and Robert Sale Alabama, but the only one remaining is Robert Sale Alabama, and they are budgeted at seven hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety. However, with Vogel now coming online, we will have excess power, so we can enter back into some agreements with third-party or continue to increase off-system sales since we will have that power. Mm-hmm. But I mean, you got to click through as I go. All right. Our electric department expenses increased six million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and nine. So although that revenue number looks nice, the expenses are just as high. Most of that is through purchase power. In FY twenty-three, the expenses increased two million four hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and twenty. Hey. Line maintenance and improvements are budgeted at four hundred thousand, system protection at one fifty, new customer construction at three hundred thousand, LED conversion for streetlights at a hundred and seventy-five thousand, security lighting at seventy-five thousand. LED conversion for streetlights at a hundred and seventy-five thousand, security lighting and seventy-five thousand, automated switching is a hundred thousand, utility relocations are at fifty thousand, and the bill pay kiosk, we're going to add a second one, is at sixty thousand. I guess you're just having to do that? I don't know what's happening. Okay, to continue with electric expenses, their capital this year is budgeted at one million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-two. And FY twenty-three, that projection was one million six hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and six. The general fund transfer for this year has increased a little bit, but it is at that fifteen percent at nine million four hundred and fifty-eight thousand fifteen. In FY twenty-three, uh, the transfer was at eight million seven hundred and ninety-six thousand. Our reserved earnings in the electric department this year are projected to be one million one hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and thirty-seven. For wastewater, this is the department where we do expect that decrease in revenue at four hundred thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, but our expenses are going up with that two million dollar Shoal Creek sewer Shoal Creek Sewer Basin Improvement Project. So those expenses are increasing four million two hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and fifty-four. Shoal Creek's budget is up four hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and seven. The Potato Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant budget is up four hundred and eleven thousand eight ninety-one. Cabin Creek says up four hundred and five thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. Blant Mill is pretty much flat with just a twenty-seven hundred dollar increase. The lab as well, at less than a ten thousand dollar increase. Our lift stations are projected to have an expense um above last year's by seventy-six thousand five hundred and eighty-three. Sledge management is also up by almost sixteen thousand, and then the big number is in wastewater collections for those sewer improvements at two million nine hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-four. So when you look at their capital, they have two million one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in capital compared to last year's two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, but the biggest one are the Shoal Creek Sewer Basin improvements at two million. They also are in need of a composite sampler at ten thousand, an influent pump at forty-four thou- forty-four thousand, and then we always budget that hundred thousand dollars for renewals and extensions, which is your um either extension of a line or potentially a replacement of a line if we um need to do so. In our water department, the revenue is expected to increase one million twenty-one thousand two thirty, with residential projections expected at two hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-two above last year. Commercial is expected to increase revenue by four hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and thirty-three. Our industrial institutional revenue is expected to decrease, though, at ninety-seven thousand eight fifty-three. And the wholesale revenue excluding Spalding County is expected to increase four hundred and seventy-three thousand one eighty, with Spalding County's net at about eighty-nine thousand. Also for water expenses, we are expecting those to increase by one million sixty-one thousand two hundred and five. Last year's expected uh expense increase was over one point six million. However, our director's budget is expected to decrease by two hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-one. Steel branch is expected to increase by one point five million dollars. Harry Simmons, that over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then water distribution is expected to decrease by four hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and seventy. The total capital for water this year is budgeted a hundred and seven thousand dollars compared to last year at two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Uh, this year, they are requesting a flexum clamp on a flow meter for seven thousand. And then again, that hundred thousand dollars that we always budget for any um lines that need to be repaired, replaced, or extended. This is the big numbers for water and wastewater and our debt service. We're at seven million ninety-two thousand three hundred and thirty. Last year, we have paid that down, so it was at seven million three hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and thirty. This is principal and interest. Not gonna read these numbers to you totally, but reservoir bonds, we still have over four million dollars to pay there. Potato Creek, we're about at five hundred and forty-one thousand. Cabin Creek, about seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Shoal Creek at about four hundred and fifty thousand. Our expenses at the Flint River Pump Station for that Jifa note is about three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And then we have a few that are estimated at this time because the project has not been complete. The steel branch generator is at one twenty-three four sixty. The dam rehab so far, we think, for sixty-five thousand dollars this year. And then the sledge facilities are at seven hundred and forty-five thousand one hundred and sixty. So again, the total expenses for water and wastewater, water capital is low at a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Wastewater capital is high at two million one fifty-four with that one big project for a total of two million two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. They are, their transfer is uh right now capped at one point eight million dollars. And then their water and wastewater funds that will be reserved are one million three hundred and ninety-eight thousand thirty-one compared to last year's one million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand six fifty-four. So that's why we wanted to do that big project within budget. We are still right online about what we normally would reserve in that um department. In our stormwater department, the revenue there has increased a hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-seven, but expenses are also projected to increase by eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They do have three capital requests, an F-five-fifty pickup truck with a service body, it's eighty-five thousand dollars, a sewer inspection camera at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and a hydraulic hammer at fourteen thousand dollars for a total of two hundred and thirty-four thousand. They do have debt service and stormwater as well. It's a little bit lower at three hundred and forty-three thousand three sixty. And so they are expected to restrict within their own department. They are not allowed to transfer by law, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-three. It is a little bit lower than last year's projection of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand five eighteen. Solid waste, our revenue there is expected to increase two hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-two. Almost all of our divisions are expected to have an increase in revenue. Uh, residential at a hundred and eighty-four thousand three fifty, commercial at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand seventy-five, yard waste just slightly at twenty thousand thirty, transfer station at thirty-four thousand. Roll-off fees, we are hoping to really sort of push that business aspect of this enterprise fund at ninety-one thousand eight ninety-two. But our landfill is, we expect to have decreased fees there. We have certainly seen a a surge there at the landfill because of everybody needing to dump storm debris. So we do expect that to decrease at a hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and eighty-two. And unfortunately, we are still not able to budget for recycling. Um, those are at zero, but we are hoping that once we get that recycling center rebuilt from that fire, um, we have a contract sort of ready to go. Uh, Mr. Ennis and his card and have worked hard with a couple of different companies and found one that they think will be more profitable and worthwhile to be able to actually push that program back into existence when we get that recycling center rebuilt. Their expenses, however, have decreased more than their, or increased, I'm sorry, more than their revenues at nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-one. The director's budget is up sixty-five thousand five eighty-four. Residential has increased to forty-seven to ninety. Commercial has increased three sixty-three five forty-nine. The transfer station is expected to have an increase of two hundred and seventy-two thousand four sixty-five. The landfill is expected to have an increase of seventy-two thousand fifty-two. The closed landfill, we do still budget at a hundred thousand dollars, so that's just flat from last year. And yard waste is expected to decrease fifty-two thousand five hundred. The total capital for solid waste this year is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They do need a truck tractor at the transfer station, which we're budgeting about a hundred thousand dollars to either hopefully buy one brand new or if we can find two um used ones at a very good um quality, then we'll go ahead and do that. We also need to resurface the tipping floor. We're not sure if the fire at the transfer station building, the the garbage building um caused that floor to be damaged and more and much quicker than we expected. Um, so we're gonna have to resurface that. And then fifty thousand dollars for a water truck at the landfill. That was something that um at the internal safety audit, when we had our safety team go out there, they really need that water truck because they're sort of out, way out on the outskirts of the county. And when they're having all these lithium battery fires there, um, which is what happened to our shredder, we need to be able to put that out immediately with a water truck and not have to wait for a fire truck. So we are asking for fifty thousand dollars for that water truck. The airport, total revenues are three million two hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-two, which does include transfers. That is well up from normal. Again, that airport improvement grant at two point two million, have a total operating revenue at two million seven hundred and one thousand six ninety-five. Spalding County operations at one seventy-five eight eighty-two. Spalding County debt service at three hundred and thirty-seven thousand six ninety. Um, last, that actually breaks out into three hundred and six thousand six sixty-five for this fiscal year. They're still paying us back. If you remember, we took out the loan to begin with, and they have had to repay us. So they are paying us thirty-one thousand twenty-five um in addition to whatever, what we have to pay for that fiscal year. So the transfer from the general fund is five thirty-seven seven seventy. Um, and FY twenty-three was four forty-five nine eighty-four, and FY twenty-two was five twenty-eight one ninety, so it had one ninety-eight. So it has increased a little bit um this year. The operating expenses at the airport are three million nine fourteen seven oh two. Um, we have a capital improvement project, which is the uh FAA grant for the pavement um and markings. Our fuel, though, is also a big expense there at three hundred and twelve thousand eight ten. You can see AvGas, which is sort of your more residential mom-and-pop flyers, are at one fifty-eight oh thirty, where Jet A is actually increasing almost about to surpass that at one hundred and fifty-four thousand seven eighty. That used to not be the case, so we're getting a lot more jets in here, which is just another evidence of the need for a new airport. Telecom. This was my favorite picture, I think, from from this year from our Halloween party. So I had to make sure I added that in for them. Their operating revenue increased by sixty-five thousand seven forty-one compared to last year's increase of sixty-eight thousand six thirty. So their total revenue will be over a million dollars at one million seventy-nine thousand eight seventy-one. Five hundred and fifty thousand of that comes from fiber leases um compared to last year's five hundred and seven thousand six twenty, and then internal service charges of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand six seventy-one compared to last year at five oh six five ten. Their expenses are also over a million dollars at one million ninety-seven thousand five thirteen compared to last year's at nine hundred and four thousand thirty-eight. And their salary and benefits has increased because this year they'll have the um full position that you put in for part of the year last year and that support specialist. Um, their purchased and contracted services has decreased by seven thousand one forty-three. Their supplies have decreased by fifty-nine thousand seven sixty-eight. Their capital did increase a little bit this year, um, increased by sixty-five thousand dollars. The only thing they are requesting is another hundred thousand dollars for the fiber expansion outside of the feeder floor that we are doing out of ARPA money. In our golf course, our operating revenue has increased at five hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred dollars compared to last year's five hundred and eight thousand six hundred. If the social media world and those that I have talked to are any indication, I think that they will blow that out of the water because right now, after this weekend's tournament, everybody is very pleased with the condition of the golf course. So the operating revenue, I hope, is low for that projection. Um, their expenses are up, though, hun- by a hundred and th- three thousand six forty-nine, um, with capital budgeted at thirty-one thousand, nineteen thousand dollars for a greens roller and twelve thousand dollars for a buffalo turbine blower. The transfer required this year is slowly decreasing at five hundred and ninety-six thousand one sixteen compared to last year's need of six hundred and five thousand two oh seven. In motor pool, we are projecting revenue at one million one eighty-nine three ninety-five compared to last year's projection of one million eighty-one thousand seven oh five. The expenses this year have increased, though, as well at one million seven ninety-eight one nineteen compared to last year's budget at one million six twenty-eight four ninety-five. The capital uh within motor pool is at sixty-two thousand dollars, an electric forklift at fifty thousand dollars, and a drive-on lift at twelve thousand dollars. So the transfer required there has gone up a little bit at six hundred and eight thousand seven twenty-four compared to last year's transfer projected at five forty-six seven ninety. We are getting close to the end. So the last few component funds that we have to discuss, DDA and Main Street. Um, the DDA budget this year is three hundred and seventy thousand eight fifty-three. That is a large increase from last year of two hundred and forty-nine thousand nine sixty-six. Almost every single dollar of that is a capital request that, again, is a little different than we've done before. Um, the DDA is requesting that they be able to purchase, rehab, and reset, resell a building um in the downtown area. So we're going to transfer that money from TAD one, which we've talked about at our last workshop, about the money that is sitting there for them to be able to do that. So there's an eighty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollar allocation, but two hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and eighty of that total budget is specific to DDA this year. In Main Street, that budget also increased. It's two hundred and eight thousand one hundred and thirty-three projected for FY twenty-four compared to the one hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-eight for FY twenty-three. And there's a ninety-six thousand seven hundred and one dollar allocation and a one hundred and eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-two that is specific to Main Street. Almost all of that increase is from the transfer of the Economic Development Coordinator to Main Street Manager and into that fund. Hotel motel tax, we have projected a little bit of decrease in revenue at a hundred and thirty-two thousand. We haven't quite met the projections of this year. We're only off by a couple percentage points, but we don't want to continue that trend and 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 miss that mark again. So we did decrease that compared to last year's one hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred. As um by law, we have to separate that out. So our historic city hall receives eighteen point seven five percent of that budget, which we're projecting to be twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty. GSPTA, as our destination marketing organization, receives the bulk of it at forty-three point seven five percent at fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty. And then we are able to put um thirty-seven point five percent into our general fund unrestricted, which helps offset some of the cost of economic development at forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Lastly, we have three special revenue funds. We've already talked about CDBG. Again, that's a million-dollar grant now, so our local match is six hundred and sixteen thousand six eighteen. We do budget for that because we are normally very good at getting those grants with the help of Mr. Lewis, Mr. Jacobs, and our great consultants. Our court technology fund is budgeted at twenty-five thousand dollars. That is restricted for only court technology use. And then, of course, our revenue for T-SLOSS is budgeted at three million seven twenty-seven five. We have been ahead of collections there throughout the year, so I hope to continue that trend. But we just conservatively want to make sure that we keep that um revenue the same as what we expected. So that is our budget for this year. One thing um that I think is is most important that is different is that we weren't able to balance this budget uh just in the ways that we have through revenues and expenses for this particular fiscal year. There is an approximate one million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollar shortfall. Um, and so we are asking, we can sit here all day long, I can cut as many expenses as I can. Um, but we're not going to make that up without talking about cutting services. At this time, I think that is about the last thing the city needs. I think we have proven throughout the last six months that when we come together as an organization and provide the services that we can, we function very well. Um, and so we are asking that we take that money from our fund balance right now um to cover that difference. We have over fifteen million dollars in the general fund fund balance, about seventy-four million overall. Um, of course, we all know, I think it was beaten our heads, that fund balance does not mean you have fifteen million dollars in cash sitting in the bank, but we do know we have the amount that we need to cover here. Additionally, I got an email yesterday from um Gima, who says that they have all of the information from FEMA. That doesn't mean they have all the information documentation that they say they're gonna need, but they've been through about ten percent of it, um, which means that FEMA has already okayed our first reimbursement, and now Gina has to go through everything. Ironically, that first reimbursement is about two hundred thousand dollars more than what I'm asking to take from Fund Balance, which is two million one hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. So my proposal at this point is to take the shortfall from Fund Balance to balance the budget. As soon as we get in the FEMA reimbursement, we just put it right back in. And with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Any questions? Hope you're on the right side. Any questions on the left side?
Thank you. Um, just projected use. We haven't had um the commercial growth that we thought we made because we had to tell them they couldn't. So it's sort of our own, our own problem because we don't have the ability to expand into Shoal Creek right now. And so we've got to account for that, and unfortunately, that means that revenue has to drop a little bit. It, I mean, it it never looks good when you're saying that that revenue is gonna decrease in an enterprise fund. Um, but I I think that is the more appropriate conservative way to budget for it this year.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, um, I guess we're now ready to run the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
So moving into public hearing, the same comments regarding the proposed budget for fiscal June, beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody on my left side, like, on the board? Anybody on my right side, like, on the board? Any other comments?
I don't think so. Y'all have any comments? Don't look like it.
Well, just give a shout out to the finance department and all the departments for their hard work and dedication to this process. Um, this is a, consider what we've gone through with the storm recovery for the daunting task to bring this before us. And then, um, I like the new layout of how everything kind of goes through with the, with the charts and the
Mm-hmm, very nice.
Kind of feeds in there. Record of more analysis, and we will, right, next week on the
Thirteen.
Thirteen, we will have, um, six o'clock um regular meeting at that time, we will have public hearing and then vote on it.
Yes.
Six o'clock meeting.
Yes, sir.
Final budget, plus anybody that has some other things to add that comes up between now and then.
Yeah, if there's any questions or comments between now and then, we can certainly address those or do it next Tuesday. If if for some reason something changes enough that we do need to make a revision to this, we would have to call a meeting. Um, so if we can Um so if we can know that ahead of Friday, we can go ahead and notice it that way if there is a change that needs to be made. Um otherwise, we would have to call a meeting sometime before June thirty. Um otherwise, if there's no anticipated questions, comments, changes, then we'll be good to go for next Tuesday.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
That being said, we have a motion to um cancel the uh cancel the meeting.
Adjourn.
Motion, hurry, uh go to your meeting. Just hurry with motion, second. Take a bound this word. Thank you all for making me on this month on Tuesday morning.
Yes, thank you.